Hello, this is Joe Pearson, the project planner for this application. This is the presentation for the for the 2420 Oxnard Boulevard U-Haul project filed by U-Haul. This is a request to allow the conversion of an existing building into a three-story mini warehouse slash self-storage space, including a U-Box storage warehouse and allow for outdoor storage of truck and equipment rentals and RV storage on a eight-point-eight-six acre site. The height of the building itself would not be modified, and the structure would be renovated through a reconfiguration of the interior space to allow for the three stories of mini warehouse. The retail use is allowed by right and the general commercial or C2 zone. The retail use has been in operation since 2019, however, due to lack of compliance with associated building permits for the improvements to allow for the retail store, an occupancy clearance has not been granted to date. Prior to the applicant's purchase of the property, 2016, the applicant was informed that their proposed uses were not permitted uses. The applicant is requesting these uses be allowed in accordance with Oxnard City Code Section 16-135, which states that no other uses shall be permitted in the C2 zone without the approval of the city council. Pursuant to this section, the city council can allow for uses not currently listed as permitted, however, each of these uses must be consistent with the intent of the C2 zoning designation and the commercial general land use designation. Attachment E of Attachment 1 to the staff report includes the applicable 2030 general plan policies that the council should consider in the review of this project. Should the city council determine that one or more of these uses are not appropriate in the zoning or land use designation, the project must be revised to remove that component of the project as it is not a currently permissible use under the current zoning. While the planning commission did ultimately recommend approval of the project five to one due to incompatibility of the proposed uses with the C2 zone and commercial general land use designation and the city's vision for this area, which were raised by some of the commissioners and members of the public and will be further discussed later in this presentation, the staff report includes a option for the city council to deny all of the requested uses. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for the proposed uses and allow for the renovation and conversion of an existing 152,000 square foot, one-story warehouse into a three-story, approximately 203,000 square foot mini warehouse storage space with a U-Box storage warehouse of approximately 34,000 square feet and approximately 3,000 square feet of new retail space. This would be in addition to the existing retail space with a parking area on the north end of the lot, which would provide for the truck and equipment rentals as well as 46 covered RV storage spaces. Noticing for this project was provided on multiple occasions. The sequel notice was published in the newspaper and mailed out. The planning commission meetings held on November 17th, 2022, January 5th, 2023, and February 2nd, 2023, were published in the newspaper with onsite postings done and a mail notice sent out. For the city council hearing, again, a onsite posting was done. It was published in the newspaper and mailed out to all property owners within 300 square 300 feet of the project site. The project site is located at 2420 North Oxnard Boulevard, situated towards the north end of the city and consists of an existing vacant warehouse with the exception of a approximately 2,000 square foot retail center, which was approved under a separate minor modification. However, there are some aspects of that minor modification that have not been complied with, primarily related to minor landscaping and other improvements that will be affected by the subject SUP. As seen in the northbound streetscape view along Oxnard Boulevard, at the south end of the site is the existing U-Haul Retail Center and rental space. And the view from the southbound Oxnard Boulevard shows the existing vacant parking area that will be converted into the RV storage lot as well as the truck and equipment rental area. As seen from the aerial view of the project site, the site is surrounded by the Southern Pacific Railroad on the north and east sides, which separate the project from adjacent commercial land uses. To the south is mixed commercial and auto repair uses. And to the west is the South Bank Residential Neighborhood and Casitas Apartment Homes. The subject's site has a general plan land use designation of commercial general and is located within the general commercial or C2 zoning district. The intent of the commercial general land use designation is to provide for retail centers and freestanding commercial uses along arterials, which may also include office and residential uses up to 18 dwelling units per acre, live-work, work-live, and mixed uses. Starting with some background on the existing center, this slide provides an evolution of the project site. On September 1st, 1970, the city council approved a client development permit to permit the construction of a approximately 155,000 square foot Levitt's Furniture Warehouse and Retail showroom. In 2016, the property was acquired by U-Haul, and on January 23rd, 2017, U-Haul applied for a minor modification to allow for the establishment of a retail use within a approximately 2,200 square foot portion of the building, restore non-conforming landscaping and lighting conditions on-site, and enhance the building architecture. This was approved in 2018, and on August 21st, 2017, the subject SUP was formally submitted. The minor modification did not include any of the uses being requested as part of this project. The minor modification was separated into two phases, which was intended to prevent the installation of improvements associated with the uses that require a special use permit and council approval. There are some aspects of the minor modification that have not been complied with, primarily landscaping improvements, again, that are affected by the subject SUP. While the subject application was formally submitted for processing and review between September 2017 and February 2022, the applicant changed the scope of the project four times, resulting in multiple completeness reviews, multiple development advisory committee meetings, and multiple revisions to required studies and environmental reviews for the project. Attached to the staff report is a permit timeline of the site since 2016, which provides more context. As previously noted, the site has requested building permits for the retail component as well as other improvements. Since 2017, nine building permits have been issued. However, one permit has expired. Only one has been finalized, and one is currently in plan check. Six of the other permits were issued, have remained open pending final inspection. Since 2017, the site has continued to operate without an approved temporary certificate of occupancy. There have also been continued compliance issues. Four code compliance cases have been opened on the site since 2016. Of note, code case 18-1297, which was for work without permits, remained open from April 2018 until February 15th of 2023. All permits to date have been complied with or all code compliance cases have been complied with as of February 15th, 2023. The overall site plan can be divided into two sections. The north side of the site will consist of the RV parking, storage area, and rental staging area. The RV storage area will be secured by an eight-foot wrought iron style sliding gate entry with the rental staging area immediately south. While there would be some additional landscaping, these areas would still be visible, traveling both north and southbound on Oxnard Boulevard due to the limited abilities to screen and the height of the proposed stored vehicles. The south section of the site consists of the existing warehouse building and additional parking lot and U-Haul Retail Center. Along Oxnard Boulevard, additional exterior truck loading spaces and customer parking is provided. The site also has two access points from Oxnard Boulevard via an existing driveway at the south end of the site and a driveway towards the north end of the site. The project would be completed in two phases, with most of the exterior work to be completed under Phase 1. Due to the phasing of the project, should city council move forward with Option 1 of the staff report, staff recommends the inclusion of a phasing condition to ensure that the project is completed in a timely manner. The phasing condition has been added as condition number 46 in Attachment 4 of the staff report, and the condition generally requires that Phase 2 be started and completed within three years. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, the staff and staff report, the three stories will be accommodated within the existing northern portion of the building. The modifications to the facade would implement neutral paint colors with minimal advertising and a variety of materials to create a varied visual character. The front of the building, visible from Oxnard Boulevard, as shown in the west elevation, would consist primarily of light stone colors and ribbed metal paneling, broken up by orange panels and making garage doors on the single-story section of the building. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Acts, an environmental consultant under the supervision of planning division staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration. The MND identified three areas, biological resources, air quality, and cultural resources, where the impacts were determined to be less than significant with mitigation incorporated. The final MND includes a mitigation and monitoring reporting program with the inclusion of the mitigations. Staff has determined that with these mitigations, the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. Prior to the first planning commission meeting, the community development director in 2019 indicated to the applicant team that staff was not likely to support the proposed uses, which had continued to change since their 2017 seminal. In 2020, after additional meetings between the applicant team and the city, staff indicated we would not provide a recommendation to the planning commission on the proposed request. In accordance with this, city staff did not provide a recommendation to the planning commission, though city staff continue to have concerns with the proposed project as it relates to consistency with the general plan and zoning. However, as with any application, city staff continued to work with the applicant to improve the project to the extent feasible in the event that the project did move forward. At the November planning commission meeting, discussion ensued regarding the appropriateness of the proposed use, traffic, solar requirements, and potential for alternative uses. The commission requested additional clarifications on sales and property tax generation numbers provided by the applicant and direction on possible solar requirements, and continued the item to December 15th, 2022. At the December 15th meeting, the item was continued to January 5th, 2023, to allow more time to gather the information. On January 5th, 2023, the planning commission received and reviewed all of the requested additional information from the project applicant and staff. The planning commission considered the project and following commission deliberation, a motion of intent to recommend approval of the project was made. On February 2nd, 2023, the commission voted five to one to adopt a resolution recommending approval of the special use permit to city council. While the commission ultimately voted to recommend approval of the project to the city council, concerns were raised by commissioners and members of the public regarding compatibility of the proposed uses with the C2 zone and CG or commercial general land use designation. With the exception of the proposed retail use, each of the applicants' requested uses are currently only permissible in the city's industrial zones as they are consistent with the intent of those industrial zones and the other uses found there. Therefore, in the consideration of this project, the city must consider the appropriateness of each of the proposed uses as they relate to the intent of the C2 zone and commercial general land use designation. As previously noted, the commercial general land use designation allows for retail centers and freestanding commercial uses along arterial corridors. The intent of the C2 zone is to primarily allow for retailing office and service-related uses as well as some residential. Based on review of the general plan and zoning code and the intent of both of these land uses, city staff believes that the presence of these industrial uses would not be consistent with the intent and goals of the city as it relates to development of the C2 zone and commercial general land use designation. Mini warehouse was specifically removed from the C2 zone in 2009 for this reason. Also, while the CT zone does allow for recreational RV park, RV storage is explicitly prohibited in the C2 zone under Section 16136A18, which states that a recreational vehicle park not including vehicle storage or trailers over 30 feet in length is allowed through a special use permit. Again, as previously noted, prior to the applicant's purchase of the property in 2016, the applicant was informed that their proposed uses were not permitted uses in this zone. Since the original seminal of this application, city staff has continued to consider the apartment-ness of this use and has determined that it is not the best location for an indoor and outdoor storage facility as it is not consistent with divisions, goals, and policies of the city's general plan and the C2 zone. It is surrounded by an area experiencing a resurgence of urban development activities such as the Wagon Wheel Gold's Gem True Hotel by Hilton and other uses, and it is a prime location for continued urban growth, which can include a variety of uses, including retail commercial, which we see in the surrounding areas, mixed use, or high-density residential. During the commissioners' deliberations, a discussion ensued about the potential use of the property for other uses, including residential. As previously noted, residential, including mixed use, is permissible in the C2 zone. This site was previously identified for residential in the city's housing element. With the most recent housing element update, however, the city was required to remove the property from the housing element sites due to the state requirement that the current property owner have an interest in developing the site for housing in order for it to be included in the housing element. Despite it being removed from the housing element, there is a history of interest for mixed use or residential on the site. In 2005, a mixed-use housing development application was submitted to the city that included approximately 1,200 residential units and 170,000 square feet of commercial office and retail. While this project was progressing and was it was ultimately withdrawn in 2008 due to changes in the economy at the time. However, it did show the potential viability of the site for large-scale mixed-use residential in creating a strong, well-designed entry into the city. In recent history, similar sites, similar or smaller sites and adjacent to the railroad or major roadways have been approved or constructed with mixed use or residential developments. Lastly, the site is also a major entryway into the city and part of the North Oxnard Transit Enhancement District, or NOTED, Urban Village. The Urban Village or the NOTED Urban Village is designated a catalyst project by the California Department of Housing and Community Development as an example of desirable mixing of land uses and activities combined with transit that in total reduce the volume of local traffic, local vehicular travel, and as a result, greenhouse gas emissions. This site was identified as an opportunity for mixed for a mixed-use project that integrates the River Park Wagon Wheel or the Village and the Espinac Developments. While the future development of the site would be determined by the property owner, subject to compliance with city rules and regulations and compliance with the C2 zone and 2030 general plan, the following examples highlight nearby developments which could be consistent with the intent of the 2030 general plan. The first one of the developments is in the Wagon Wheel Development, which is a mixed-use development consisting of approximately 219 units and approximately 16,000 square feet of commercial on a 4.2 acre site. Similar to the proposed project site, it is directly adjacent to the railroad and close to Oxnard Boulevard. This is the True Hotel by Hilton project, which was approved in 2021 and is directly across the railroad from this project site within the Food for Less Shopping Center. The center as a whole has experienced ongoing redevelopment, beginning in 2015, including most recently the completion of the Gold's Gem and approval of the True Hotel by Hilton. The city is also currently processing an application for the property, the vacant property, to the south of this site. Each of the uses currently approved for the center could be permitted on the project site and be consistent with the city's policies and regulations. This is another example of an urban project that could be consistent with the intent of the general plan. This is an example of a housing project on an oddly-shaped site adjacent to a major roadway, similar to, again, the current project site. Each of these projects only provide an example of the types of desirable mixing of land uses and activities that would provide an opportunity for mixed-use projects that integrates the River Park, Wagon Wheel, and Espinac Developments, as well as would create a strong entry point into the core of the city. As mentioned above, after Levitt's vacated the property, the structure fell into a state of disrepair. There have been minor improvements, including painting and replanting of landscaped areas made to the site by the applicant. However, concerns were raised by some of the commissioners and the members of the public regarding the view corridor. The uses proposed and lack of adequate screening for the proposed uses. Pursuant to the 2030 general plan, Oxnard Boulevard is a designated scenic corridor, which requires that all public and private investments positively contribute to the overall character of the city by minimizing impacts on the important view corridors by creating edge treatments along green belts and a landscape buffer corridor of at least 30 feet along the designated scenic corridors and other major transportation corridors. While some landscaping and wrought iron-style fencing is proposed, the outdoor storage uses, including the storage of the rental trucks and equipment and recreational vehicles, will be visible from Oxnard Boulevard, one of the primary entry points into the city. The wrought iron-style fencing and landscaping will not adequately screen RVs and outdoor rentals from the railroad or Oxnard Boulevard. And while there are other vehicle storage facilities along Oxnard Boulevard, they are largely remnants of long-operating businesses since the early 1990s, and as these properties redevelop, they will be required to come into compliance with current policies and regulations of the Oxnard City Code. With this being redevelopment of the site, city staff has concerns that the proposed industrial uses would not be consistent with the intent and goals of the city as it relates to the development of this area of the city. As the next few slides will show, the view corridor would be impacted by the proposed outdoor storage uses, including the storage of the rental trucks and equipment and recreational vehicles. The view corridor or the view will be impacted by the loading and unloading of both the warehouse and mini storage portions of the building as, again, the loading spaces will be visible from Oxnard Boulevard. However, first to set the stage, there are many general plan policies that are applicable to this project and the site. While the project does generally meet the policy for infill development and does provide a level of redevelopment, it does not comply with many of the policies aimed at enhancing the commercial area and view corridors. In particular, policies or CD policies 9.3 and 9.4 would speak to the gateway enhancement and view corridor preservation, which calls for improving the areas to enhance the city's identity, sense of place, and provide visual emphasis to the streetscapes of the city. Additionally, policy CD 4.2 calls for upgrading, beautification, revitalization, and appropriate use of existing commercial areas and shopping centers, beautification, revitalization and appropriate use of existing commercial areas and shopping centers and especially within redevelopment project areas to continue to develop and implement programs that link commercial areas with their adjoining neighborhoods, increase overall jobs, sales and property valuation. While the project proposes to make minor facade and landscape improvements, the storage of vehicles and unloading and loading activities associated with the proposed use will not, will only serve to detract from efforts to beautify the area and the industrial uses will not serve to link any of the adjacent commercial or residential uses. Again, while the project does include minor exterior improvements and up to twenty-five jobs total per the applicant, given the important location and long-term impacts of allowing this use here, the project is not consistent with the vision of the general plan for this area. So the next few slides show various viewpoints of the site identifying the proposed storage and loading areas, areas visible from the adjacent roadways. The first slide shows a view of the site traveling southbound on Oxnard Boulevard as people enter into the core of the city. While the fence shown will extend along this area to the first driveway, it, this will not completely screen the RV storage or equipment rental areas. Per the Oxnard City Code, the maximum fence height is eight feet, which would be below the height of most RVs and box-type trucks. Therefore, the RVs and equipment would be visible both through the fence, as shown in the fencing example, and above the fence. This is a view of the site traveling northbound. In this location, no fence is proposed, so there will be a direct view of the truck and equipment rental storage area as well as the RV storage area. In addition, as I will show in show on later slides, there will be truck loading along the front of the building where the U-Haul trailer is currently shown on the left side of the image or on the right-hand side of the image. This is a view of the northern street side of the building where there will be truck loading and customer loading spaces. Again, no fencing is proposed here and these areas would be directly visible from the from Oxnard Boulevard. Additionally, since U-Haul began op- began operation, rental trucks and trailers have been regularly stored and parked in these areas despite not currently being allowed. This is a view of the northern portion of the site as viewed from Orchard Boulevard. While this area would be improved with a news signal and pedestrian crosswalk, the RV storage and rental equipment area would be directly visible from Orchard as well as Oxnard Boulevard. As shown, the boxes generally identify the southern portion of the RV storage area in blue and the rental equipment area in red. Again, given the flat grade at this point, even with the fencing and minor landscape improvements, the storage and loading areas will be clearly visible from the scenic roadway. This last view is from the other side of the railroad and as shown, the site is highly visible from the railroad, which in addition to serving freight trains, also serves as a commuter rail. For context, shown on the slide is the existing U-Haul location on Savior's Road in the city of Oxnard. As shown, the site is covered with rental equipment and boxes placed for advertisement. While this may be appropriate for industrial areas, this is not consistent with the intent of the twenty-third general plan, was called for the project site to function as a scenic entry corridor to the city. As previously noted, the site is located within the general commercial zone district and is subject to the general commercial development standards. The project would generally conform to the applicable C two physical development standards for the general commercial land use. However, mini warehouse slash self-storage warehouse, truck rentals and recreational vehicle storage, as previously noted, are not allowed uses within the C two zone. Again, in order to allow for these requests, the city council must make a determination that each of the proposed industrial uses, except for the retail use, are consistent with the intent of the general commercial or C two zoning designation and the commercial general land use designation. While the applicant is choosing to request these uses for the site, the applicant, similar to other property owners in the C two zone, would be able to develop the site with a variety of alternative uses which are allowed in the C two zone similar to many of the uses currently surrounding the property. A little bit of background as it relates to mini warehouse self-storage. In nineteen seventy-five, the city council passed a resolution which established development standards for mini warehouses, which stated that these uses may locate in the CM and M one and ML zones. Further, in two thousand nine, the city council passed an ordinance which removed mini warehouses as a permitted use into, in the C two zone. As presented in the staff report, at that time, city, the city determined that the general allowance of self-storage facilities was not consistent with the purpose and intent of the general plan for the C two zone. And the use was not consistent with other retailing office and service-related uses permitted or conditionally permitted in the C two zone. This change was processed as a cleanup action to make the Oxnard City Code language consistent with the mini warehouse policies adopted by city council in nineteen seventy-five and the general plan. Current staff agrees with the determinations made by prior city staff and the city council in removing this use from the C two zone. Allowing for the redevelopment of the project site is anticipated to generate additional tax revenue that would be directly added to the city's general fund. However, how much revenue is unknown and the estimates provided by the applicant are not substantiated by the city's sales tax consultant. In the staff report, the applicant or attached to the staff report, the applicant provided projected tax revenues. The, previously, the applicant presented at the November seventeenth two thousand twenty-two planning commission hearing estimated taxes to be approximately three hundred and ninety-nine thousand based on a one-point-five percent tax rate. At the planning commission hearing, questions were raised about the accuracy of the numbers, so the commission asked the applicant to return with data to support the numbers. After working with staff to revise the report to be more in line with the proposed projects, the applicant provided a revised report that estimated yearly tax within two years upon project completion to be approximately two hundred and forty-eight thousand including property tax assessment based on a three percent tax rate. In summary, the consultants in consultation with the, with our city sales tax consultant, staff determined that there isn't enough information on many aspects of the business model to verify their projections. However, comparing similar uses in Southern California, the applicant's tax projections seem high, especially considering our residential market and specifically the portable storage aspect is high compared to similar businesses. In summary, at this public hearing, the city council has the option to move forward with option one, which would allow for the twenty-four twenty Oxnard Boulevard U-Haul project as recommended by the planning commission with the newly added condition as recommended by staff regarding phasing. Or two, should the county, city council take the action of denying the project, the city council can direct staff to return at a future public hearing with documents incorporating the direction provided by the city council.